Kim Crupper.
Here.
April Favella.
Here.
Ronnie Mains.
Here.
Bob Perry.
Here.
Rick Skinner.
Here.
Jenna Smith.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum and we will call the meeting to your order and all the guests please sign in if you haven't already done so. And we're going to ask Councilman Crupper for the invocation and then we'll do the pledging.
Shall we pray? Father in heaven, thank you for the day you blessed us with and the day of life and watching over us here tonight and today that you brought us here safely, that we're here tonight to conduct the city's business, that we do it not only in the honor of you but the respect of all of our taxpayers and citizens in Williamstown. God directs us each and every day and guides us in our decisions tonight, forgive us for our sins where we fail. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, P C? The announcements for the Thanksgiving holiday, yes, Wednesday the 27th and Thanksgiving 28th, the city offices will be closed. December 1st will be the next regular council meeting at 6:00 PM. On December 2nd, I'm going to talk about this in a second, we will have a Williamstown-type town hall meeting. It'll be at the Williamstown School and it starts at 5:30, it'll probably go about two hours, 5:30 to 7:30. I'm urging and asking all residents to try to attend this meeting, more to come on that. December 6th is the Country Christmas downtown Williamstown, that's at 4:30. That's always our biggest event of the year, I'm sure it'll be packed and we get to see Santa. On January 8th, the clerk's office will close at 1:00 PM for software training as well as the 27th and 28th of January for the upgrade installation. We have a new software program going into the clerk's office that will help Crystal and her team and will help the city of residents regarding their bills, paying, and just a better overall control of the city finances. So it does take some training, does take a couple of days to get the upgrade installed. So we ask the town and the residents to have a little patience and bear with us. I think everyone will be very pleased with the results once we're done. I don't really have a mayor's update today, but I do have something that I want to talk about quickly regarding the town hall meeting, which is on December 2nd. We will have this meeting to discuss where the city stands and the steps we need to take moving forward. We've made a lot of progress and I want to walk everyone through some of the challenges that we faced when we first started in last April and some of the decisions we've made and why we made them and just talk about the next phases of going forward, moving forward. Your voice matters. We want to hear what's important to you. This meeting, a little different than the business meeting we had a while back, this meeting, we're going to open up questions from the residents. We encourage questions, we will ask people to be professional, we will ask people to, you know, take your turn if you will, but we want to hear from people. We want to hear your questions, we want to hear your opinions, no matter what they are. This meeting is an opportunity for all of us to be part of the solution in the help guide Williamstown future. So I am requesting that everybody come and participate, but I'm also requesting that you come with solutions. If you see an issue, you see a challenge, you see a problem, bring it to our attention, but try to come with a solution for it as well. It's easy to point fingers, it's easy to point out issues, but it takes a team to point out the solutions where we all work together. So that's what I'm encouraging. I encourage everyone to attend, ask questions, share your perspective, and we'll make decisions together that reflect the needs and priorities of our whole community. So that's my update. It's on December 2nd. We'll have one more council meeting before then, the day before actually, but I want to make sure that we have that information out there. Please let everyone know. Superintendent's reports, council is next on the agenda. I think your clerk's report was on your, in front of your, on your table. The rest you should have had in there. Rick, I believe you asked for usage of the vehicles last time. I believe they're there this time. One or two may have missed, but the majority are there.
Yeah.
And I will open up for any questions or comments.
I really thought Jason gave a really good report. A lot of good things going on.
There are a lot of good things going on. No questions? You want a couple more minutes or shall I move ahead? Hearing nothing, I'm going to move ahead. Still on the old business, the second reading of ordinance 2516, text amendment amending Article 7 of the hotel zoning ordinance of the city of Williamstown, adding boutique hotels to definitions. Mr. Morgan?
Can we go back to the number one?
The corrections?
Oh, I know I always miss that.
But I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
We have a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Bob Perry will second it. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Kim Crupper.
Yes.
April Favella.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Bob Perry.
Yes.
Rick Skinner.
Yes.
Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. I apologize. That's the second time in a row I've done that. I must have a line in my glasses that skips out. Second reading of the ordinance 2515-16. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, these are two ordinances that are in tandem with each other. One of them deals with the definition of a boutique hotel and then the other one talks about how that definition is applied to the other ordinances. These are ordinances 202516 and 18, an ordinance of the city of Williamstown, Grant County, Kentucky, amending the text of the official zoning ordinance 80-199 at SEC. Article 7 definitions, Article 10 district regulations, and Section 10 CBD central business district zone. Now therefore beordordained by the city council of Williamstown, Grant County, Kentucky as follows. Whereas the city council of the city of Williamstown, Kentucky hereby defines a boutique hotel as a building or structure kept, used, maintained, advertised, or held out to the public as a place where sleeping accommodations are furnished to the public consisting of a total of 50 or fewer lodging rooms. A boutique hotel shall be located in a renovated space in the city of Williamstown and as such may have lodging rooms on the ground floor of the building. This is the summary of ordinance 2025-16. And whereas the city council of the city of Williamstown, Kentucky sees fit to add boutique hotel to the conditional uses exceptions expressed in its official zoning ordinance 80-199 at SEC. Article 10 district regulations, Section 10 CBD central business district. This is the summary of ordinance 2025-17. It was given its first reading at the regular session on the 10th day of November 2025. Second reading is today, November 18, 2025. There's a line for the mayor to sign if it's approved and then attested by the city clerk.
We can do one motion for one. I would entertain a motion to accept both of these ordinances to the city ordinance 202516, 202517. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
Moved by Councilor Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilor Mains. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Kim Crupper.
Yes.
April Favella.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Bob Perry.
Yes.
Rick Skinner.
Yes.
Jenna Smith.
Abstaining.
Councilor Smith is abstaining. The motion passes for both of the ordinances and thank you. Next on the agenda, on the new business cabinet for health and family services presentation by Clyde Jamison. Mr. Jamison, come on up to the counter. And again, my apology for last meeting.
No worries at all. So what I'd like to do is take a few minutes to talk to the city of Williamstown City Council about an urgent need in the state of Kentucky. Currently, the state of Kentucky has 8,600 children in foster care. And as of today, there are 1,200 children from the Northern Bluegrass Service Region. That is a region that includes Grant, Boone, Kenton, Campbell, Pendleton, Gallatin, Owen, Harrison, Carroll, Bourbon, and Scott counties. From Grant County, there are 48 children and currently we have 13 homes serving those children. So one of the reasons I'm here today is because Williamstown geographically is smack in the middle of our service region. You guys kind of divide it in half. Like it's, I would assume, an hour to Covington, an hour to, we'll say Georgetown, probably less than an hour to Georgetown. And we at the cabinet are always trying to find homes for children. Like one of your council members, if you don't mind me sharing your story, has sat across the table from me and went through the process. So the age ranges we typically try to capture are newborn to five, which is 12 children from Grant County, ages six to 11, which is 17 children, and ages 12 to 21, which is 19 children. The ages of six to 21 are areas of biggest need. Usually people want to take in younger children because people sometimes forget that younger children become older children. But also it is one of those things where a lot of our foster parents who come into the agency are parenting for the first time, some of them. And some of them want to have children that are younger in their home due to having older children in their home. And there is not a way that works for foster care. If there was a magical way to figure out how to find families, how to do this, how to make placements successful, I wouldn't be standing here today. We would have already solved this problem. So like I said, our biggest area of need is kids over that age of six, sibling groups, and medically complex. Because typically people would prefer to have one child in their home at a time because usually none of us, if we find out we're pregnant, are hoping for twins or more. We're usually hoping for one at a time. So with this number, I know they're not the numbers that we see in Boone or Kenton or Campbell County, but they're still numbers. And our goal is to always be least restrictive. So my goal would be for the 48 children that we have in Grant County, that all 48 children stay within Grant County. And there's two types of certification as a foster family. There is the non-familial basic foster home, which is a non-familial, and that includes a training program, a home study paperwork that covers a variety of aspects of a foster family from references, credit reports, health checks done by doctors, and stuff that assesses assesses their comfortability with certain children that we could place in their home. We do that typically in three visits, meeting with the family. When you're licensed as a foster home, there are supports from a mentoring program and local supports, and there are monthly stipends, medical cards, and free in-state tuition to help maintain the placement. One of the other areas that dominates a lot of my work is working with the relative and fictive kin population. And if I think about homes that I've recently licensed in Grant County, they would fall under that fictive kin or relative category. I think within the 2025 year, I've licensed possibly four homes in Grant County. Two of those four were a relative or a fictive kin. The other two were a nonfamilial foster home where a relationship was created due to their friendship with the fictive kin who took placement. So, a relative, pretty straightforward definition. It's a family member could be grandma, grandpa, aunt, uncle, or a sibling who will care for the child. Fictive kin is a close family friend or others with a strong relationship with the child. Doesn't necessarily have to be a biological person, but has to be someone recognized as the child's support system. So, a prime example, right now I have a teacher and a stepdad understudy. Obviously, a stepdad, if they're no longer married to the mom, would become a fictive relative, and a teacher, that falls that category. With that, there has to be some kind of relationship. We can't artificially create that relationship. With a child whose age is zero to twelve, I don't want to say there's flexibility, but for example, children zero to twelve months old really don't have any relationships with anyone because they're fresh born. So, that could be a family friend who is made aware of the child through a family member reaching out to them, or something along those lines. That way, we can justify that placement, say that they're able to keep that child support intact. So, with relative fictive kin, the goal is always maintaining those familial or familiar ties, reducing the trauma with placement, and trying to place them in the least restrictive environment. Ideally, if we have a child who lives in Williamstown, goes to Williamstown Independent Schools, and has a teacher who is willing to take placement nine times out of ten, we're going to maintain that school relationship. So, the relative fictive kin, you get those same financial supports with the monthly stipend, medical cards, respite support groups. They also have a reduced version of the home study just because they are typically taking placement and right away at the time of removal. And being that there is already that previous relationship, that is the piece that we don't necessarily have to assess with a more in-depth narrative. So, with this, the foster care system does need more families, and our goal is to always recruit within the county, keep kids within the county to the best of our ability, which is why we are trying to talk to city councils within all the cities within our service region. So far, the last two months, I've spoken with Florence, Warsaw, Walton. We'll probably most likely have one of these presentations with Union. One of my foster parents took it on her own volition to do that presentation herself, I think in 2024, so we might wait until the beginning of the upcoming year just to refresh my mind on that. So, my ask for you all is, my colleague Erica has some packets, or you all might have them, I think I gave it to your assistant, a packet with some statistics?
No, we didn't get it.
Okay, if you don't mind handing those out, and if anyone in the audience wants them, they cover the three sets of statistics that I've kind of glossed over. The numbers at the state level, the numbers within Grant County, and the numbers within the Northern Bluegrass Service Region. And I know not everyone will open their home, but there are other ways to support our cause such as donating to foster support agencies, spreading the word on social media, or even becoming a respite provider, which is someone who provides short-term care for children in foster care. It doesn't require the in-depth home study, but it does require certain background checks and anything else. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the council? Comments?
We do have a Channel 16, which is our TV station, if you'd like to put this promotional flyer on that.
Yeah, any, there is not, like, I know we as an agency are trying to figure out a way to recruit foster families, and I myself have talked to my foster families, and I've gotten a million different responses. Like, for some people, it's seeing a yard sign, for other people, it's seeing a flyer. For one of my foster families that I've had for about six years now, it was seeing my cousin, who's been a foster parent since I was in college, in the act. Like, they went to church together, she saw my cousin doing this, and it took them ten years. Now, there's no rhyme or, in my mind, there's no method to this, it's just we need people who are willing to open their homes, and we don't have an ideal person in mind other than someone who wants to help children.
Well, I know April, you know, she's a foster mom, and the office manager here, Randy, she has several, and it's quite rewarding for them, and I certainly admire the fact that they do that and sacrifice that. And I know the love is there, and so certainly appreciated. And we thank you for coming and speaking with us.
We appreciate you giving this time to speak, because again, like, someone could be watching this meeting, or at this meeting right now, or see something that you posted on Channel 16, or see one of you sharing this flyer, and that's one more foster parent. And that's one more kid who has a family. And that's always our goal, is to make sure that children have families. And there are sadly situations where children don't have families to spend the night with, and they have to go into a non-traditional placement, and that's what we're trying to prevent. And this has been a prevailing problem, honestly, for the last three years.
And I'm sure it contributes to the cycle of whatever they've gone through to begin with.
That's the thing, it is a cycle. There are a lot of times where we're finding that children who enter our system have been a part of the system for a while, and their parents have been a part of the system, and their parents have been a part of it. And it is a complex problem that I don't feel like has just one solution, but there are things we can do to try to limit the complexity of that problem.
Anything else, anyone? No, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda, council consideration approval of the WTP carbon bid for the Williamstown Water Department. I think you have that in front of you. The bids that were given, as you know, Superintendent Tim Beach spoke during the caucus regarding the reasoning for his recommendation and for our recommendation to go with F4 Water Sales and Services out of Bowling Green, but I would, you know, take a motion to accept that bid if...
Can I make a comment first?
Absolutely.
I want to just thank you, Tim, and Josh, for everything you've done. We knew when we picked this system, it was going to be about sixty thousand every four to six years. You all have tested it, made it reliable, and got us seven-plus years, so, you know, it just shows how much the employees are concerned about the system. You're putting out rated second and third in the state in water quality, so you're doing a great job, and I just want to thank you for taking on that, and I appreciate your work. Well, we thought it was going to work, and it's worked well.
But when you all bid, that was before BPOS came along, and now that's the lead cure for BPOS, now that I'm going to accept that comment.
So, you make a motion?
Yep.
Motion made by Counselor Skinner to accept the recommended bid. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ronnie Mains. Any discussion? Roll, go ahead.
Just to be in the record, because I know the caucus wasn't an official meeting, you know, it wasn't the lowest bid, but it was considered the best bid because it was a local Kentucky firm that had been supplying us before.
They're well-known to us, they come as quickly as a phone call, and they do offer training hours that are also worth money. The bid was eighty-five thousand, eight eighty-five, but I believe it's the right.
This part is also around the American, you tell them that.
Mind him, there you go. Any other discussion? Thank you, Ms. Skinner. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Kim Crapper.
Yes.
April Fabbella.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Bob Perry.
Yes.
Rick Skinner.
Yes.
And Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. I would, at this point, like to entertain a motion to go in executive session pursuant to KRS 61.810, sub-session C, discussions are proposed, pending litigation against or on behalf of the public agency.
Can I make that motion, Mayor?
Motion made by Counselor Smith. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Fabbella. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kim Crapper.
Yes.
April Fabbella.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Bob Perry.
Yes.
Rick Skinner.
Yes.
And Jenna Smith.
Okay, we'll go into executive session. Okay, we'll go in the executive session. Okay, we'll go in the executive session. Made by Counselor Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? It's not. Motion carries. We're back in session. Just so everyone, oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Kim Crupper.
Yes.
April Fabella.
Yes.
Ronnie Maines.
Yes.
Bob Perry.
Yes.
Rick Skinner.
Yes.
Jenna Smith.
Yes.